Okay, good evening. Here we are at five minutes after six. And we're having a special meeting right here for the presentation from our Engineering Services presentation. So, at this time, it's called Roll Call. Make sure all the people's here.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado, present. Councilmember Shoemaker. Mayor Protem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. We're gonna go look at our orders tonight because this is just a special meeting until we can get to our introduction from our Engineering Services. So, at this time, I want to turn it over to our City Manager and let him lead off and then we're gonna go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. We're here this evening to hear a presentation and to engage in some conversation, ask some questions of TransTech, which is the top-ranked engineering firm being considered for City Engineering Services. Consistent with the Council's adopted budget and the goals of looking for alternatives in service provision and continuing to find ways to deliver better service, we issued an RFP, we invited broadly disseminated firms to submit, they were interviewed by a staff-level committee, and we're pleased to have with us tonight the top-ranked firm. So, with that, I'd like to invite Ahmad Ansari, who's our principal with TransTech, to lead us through a presentation and then there'll be time in this segment for the Council to ask questions of the firm. Welcome. We're very glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Corbani. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, we're very happy to be here. I just wanted to let you know, my name is Ahmad Ansari. I'm the contract principal for the RFP process and the contract that we hopefully are gonna be getting in the city of West Covina. I want to turn over the main part of the presentation to Melissa DeMercy. She's gonna be doing a complete presentation of a short PowerPoint that we have prepared for the City Council tonight, and then we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you, Council, might have. Our presentation should not take more than 10 to 15 minutes. We're very cognizant of the time. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor Protem, and Honorable Council Members of West Covina. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and I know we're in the July 4th weekend, so ahead of July 4th, have a happy and safe 4th this Thursday. So, we did prepare a short presentation for you this evening. I'm gonna start off really quickly with introducing our team, so you can be familiar with some of the faces. My name is Melissa DeMercy. I have a civil engineering degree from Cal Poly Pomona, and I have extensive experience in city engineering, project management, and grant writing. Ahmad Ansari was already introduced himself. We have Ali Kayer with 30 years of experience, city engineering experience, Amy Chan, who is a green building plan checker and coordinates our development plan check portion of it, Karen Vigil, another Cal Poly Pomona civil engineer who assists in the city engineering, Jana Robbins, who has 25 years of experience in traffic engineering, also a Cal Poly Pomona alumni and professional transportation planner, Dennis Torango, one of our principals who leads and coordinates our development plan review process, Okon DeMercy, one of our deputy civil engineers. The reason we really brought this team together is this is a team that's very accustomed to working inside City Hall, interfacing with city staff, and working in the same hierarchy as other city staff. And with that, I will begin. Next slide. Okay. So, who are we? Who is TransTech? We are a multidisciplinary firm, offering city engineering, full-service municipal capabilities, including building and safety. We're very proud to be celebrating our 30th year in business this year. We were founded in 1989, we're ISO 9001 certified, as well as with an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau. We provide city engineering services to approximately 25 agencies, some of them very close to the city of West Covina. They include Temple City, Rosemead, Monterey Park, Alhambra, Azusa, San Marino, South Pasadena, South Almani, to name a few. So, we're very familiar with this general region. We work collaboratively with other public agencies such as Caltrans, Metro, SCAG, as well as project applicants and other stakeholders and utility companies. And, you know, there are several important factors to be able to provide good city engineering services to the city of West Covina, some of them being responsiveness, whether that be our interaction with city staff, our director, city management, or the public that we interface with, as well as bringing projects within budget, on time, and being cost-effective and efficient. But we also understand the importance of working with the business community, who propose to maybe develop projects and how that would impact the public right-of-way. And we actively work with the city management and the city department to make sure that West Covina continues to be a desirable place to not only live as a resident, but also conduct business in. And also, customer service is very important to our philosophy at TransTech, and we have about 100 TransTech team members available at the city's use for any need, and we have a commitment to principal-level involvement throughout the contract duration. We just really quickly wanted to list our multidisciplinary services that we have. One thing I wanted to point out was, we do also construction management inspection. Many of the awards that we have worked on, many of the projects we have worked on have been recognized for various awards within the industry. Our staff qualifications, I briefly introduced some of our project team that are here tonight. We have a lot of experience with city engineering, traffic engineering, capital improvements, project management. Many of our actual staff members have worked inside of the city as the city engineer or traffic engineer, as well as former key-level, principal-level staff members have been public works directors, city managers, et cetera. Here, we wanted to have a snapshot of our actual technical qualifications and certifications. So, we are very qualified with all of the appropriate required licenses. One thing I wanted to point out is, we're very involved in the professional organizations in our industry. So, we're up to date on what's going on. In fact, just two weeks ago, we attended a traffic engineering seminar. Some of our staff members hold various board positions or are on the policymaking side of ICC, for example, and are very involved in professional organizations to do with engineering. We wanted to include the scope of work slide, just to acknowledge that we do understand the RFP, and we are completely prepared to provide these services listed in the RFP, and we understand the expectations that the city has of what it entails to do city engineering, traffic engineering, and general engineering services. And again, you know, I go back to customer service, customer care, because that's really at the forefront of who we are as a company, being 30 years in the business. We really take that to the next level. We call it customer care. So, we are very responsive to the needs, not only of the city, of the staff, but also of resident inquiries. If it's traffic-related, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that we received it, we're working on a solution with city staff to get that to you. And also, one of the things is, we want to continue that city's reputation as a desirable place to live and conduct business in. Transition. We wanted to include this slide to kind of go over some housekeeping of what a transition would look like. We are very versed in transitioning from different scenarios. Either it could be from a county to a consultant, it could be city staff to a consultant, or from another consultant to a consultant. And we anticipate and expect, if lucky enough to be selected, to have that transition be smooth and seamless, with no impact to the actual city. One of the things that our staff will do is, we're gonna kind of do a review of the department and see what we can do and work together with city management and the city department heads to really streamline the efficiency of the city engineering program to save you guys some money. Digital capabilities, it's something we're very proud of. We are a local firm located in Chino. However, we are digital, so we are on a cloud-based system. Immediately on day one, what we plan to do is do a Dropbox business platform, do a shared folder with the city, upload all of the project information, so the city has real-time tracking, can track how the progress of projects are going. We're gonna sit down with the city, prioritize all of the projects, the tasks needed, categorize them by status, and which ones are the urgent ones, and really commence with our staff to move those projects forward into a successful completion. One of the things we wanted to talk about is our electronic plan review process that we have. We offer this at no cost to the city. We just provided a snapshot. We just recently implemented this in one of our client cities, City of Commerce, where you go to their website, you would click on the plan check portal, and then it would take you to a login page, where your applicants can log in and actually upload physically their development plans, or whatever plans that they have that they want to review. And on the city's side, they would be given admin access, so they would log in, and they could actually in real-time see what the status of certain plans are, based on their addresses or whatever filter categories they want. And it's called ePlanSoft, is the system that we use. What we did is, this is just a mock-up, it's not live, but so you can kind of visualize what it could look like for the city of West Covina. We kind of showed what it could look like on the community development page, since Engineering Division is under community development. A link would click, and you would go to this login. And if you would like, we do have a demo we can show you later on, if we have time, and if you would want us to. Another thing is, from our actual transtech.org website, you have access to that electronic plan check portal, where you can click and use the same credentials to log in. One of the things that's really important to us is community outreach, and especially with projects that are gonna impact communities, impact the residents, schools, churches, businesses, we want to make sure that they're noticed, that they know that there's gonna maybe be a construction, or there's gonna maybe be a traffic signal installation. So, what we've done in past in city engineering is sometimes we create a designated website for project specifics, especially if it's gonna be a large project. Sometimes we even go as far as creating a Twitter account. So, they link it from the city's website to this designated URL, and it gives live updates, weekly updates, bi-weekly updates. They can physically email from that website, as well as call a toll-free number, and all of those correspondents get rerouted into the project team. So, we get that in real-time and go with that same-day response, acknowledging that we received it, we're working on providing a response to you. And this really brings me to traffic engineering. Community outreach, traffic engineering go hand-in-hand. A lot of the traffic inquiries that come, do come from the residents, come from the business community, come from the schools, and we want to make sure that communication with the city and also the people who are requesting information is taken and looked at. So, we have a lot of experience in traffic engineering, specifically chairing the traffic committee meetings, for example, preparing the staff reports, presenting it to the traffic committee, and all the way to the end. So, let's say there's a stop sign that was warranted on traffic engineering, the city wants to install at a location. We would walk and work with the city departments to make sure that that stop sign is installed and follow-up with the whole project management portion of that. Another thing that we offer to cities, if they would like, is we found that educating the public sometimes really helps, especially for common traffic items, whether it be a crosswalk, a stop sign, a traffic signal, parking, curb markings, what does it mean? So, we could prepare custom informational brochures as your city engineer for the city to use, and here, we kind of did a mock-up of what that could look like. And the next slide is grant writing. This is really where my expertise comes in as well, is we are active participants to look for other sources of funding for the city. I think something with us being the city engineer is, we want to make sure that you guys are completely taking advantage of all of the funding resources that you guys are eligible to have, whether that be for project-specific, transportation, roadway projects, parks projects, and we're gonna be actively looking for those grants, submitting those grants on your behalf, and if you guys are awarded, taking you through the process to actually obligate those funds for the city and help with reimbursements and getting those funds for that project. Our team and our staff have successfully obtained over $20 million in grant funding for various client cities in just the last five years. And some of examples is called ATP, Metro Call for Projects, HSIP, and West Covina is an excellent candidate for these grants. Community benefit enhancement. Again, something, being involved in the community is very important to us, so we do do a lot of volunteer work, we do a lot of STEM workshops, work with the youth. And one thing is, when we service the city, we want to also be part of the city. And sometimes cities ask us, can you do something with the youth committee? Can you host a STEM workshop? Or, you know, can you go to this event and do maybe a training for staff? Or, maybe it's something outside of our scope. Maybe a development's coming in, and you just want to kind of pick our brain of our experience, what could be some of the challenges that that would impose on the public right-of-way? Maybe there's a homeless issue or a crime issue. We would be more than happy, at no cost to the city, we kind of call it bonus hours, we call CBE, to provide that consulting to you as part of our city engineering services. And again, being 30 years in the business, our reputation is really important, and we understand that sometimes the first interaction with city is maybe sometimes TransTech member. And we know that we have to put our best foot forward, because we are also representing the city of West Covina. So, one of the things that we really pride ourselves in is feedback, and we've been fortunate enough that our current client cities, city managers, public works directors, wrote reference letters, and we included these reference letters for you. We encourage you to reach out and hear firsthand about the services that we provide. And the last slide is why TransTech. Really, it's a summary of what I've already said, but just some of the takeaways that I want to leave with you is, we understand urgency, project sensitivity, and priority, and we have the resources available to be able to quickly jump on items, especially if it's an urgent situation. We're very local, we have 100 staff members readily available to use. We have the professional qualifications, certifications, and experience, and because we're a multidisciplinary, not only in city engineering, construction management, building and safety, we have a broad expertise of resources. So, sometimes cities that we are city engineer ask us, you know what, somebody's on vacation, we need a filler here. We do staff augmentation as well for emergency situations. And again, we actively pursue grant opportunities for the city, and we provide similar services to several cities nearby. But most importantly, we would be absolutely honored to work with the city, the city staff, city management, to be able to provide city engineering services to the city of West Covina, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our council has a few questions, and maybe you could quarterback those and direct them to the right member of your team. Or Ahmad, did you want to do that together?
Some of the questions we're gonna ask, if you don't have the answers right now, which is fine, you know, because we're just throwing them at you, and we'd like for you to, the question, we want you to consider them, and then come back with the answer that we really want to hear. Okay? We don't want some kind of throwing up their answers saying, we don't want to be pacified. We want a true answer from you. So, I'm gonna ask you the first one, okay? As a council, we're interested in improving our service delivery, especially in our street sweeping. Now, what would be your approach and timing for the council consideration of a street sweeping sign program? What we have, you know, we pay a lot for street sweeping. All of our residents complain that their streets aren't getting clean because all the cars are parked there. We need to figure out some way, be able to get the residents to understand that our program is expensive, the streets have to be cleaned, by law, we have to make sure it's done. So, what we need, what you guys are doing, figure out some kind of a sign program that we can get working, so all the residents understand that this has to be done. So, that's one of my things, and it's talking to the council, that we're really interested. An answer tonight, you don't have to come up with an answer with me tonight, but with those questions, we need, that's one of the ones that I'm very on, because I've been concerned about our street sweeping for a long time. I see them going down the middle of the street, not getting the side streets. So, this is something I would look forward to hearing, what you guys would do about this.
Absolutely. I mean, can I kind of?
Sure, please, if you have some kind of.
Yeah, well, one of the things is, because we do service about 25 agencies, we call it kind of lessons learned. So, we've seen what works and what doesn't work in street sweeping in various cities. So, we would kind of regroup and go back to see what are the successful implementations and share those with you. Some of it may be just community outreach, educating the city. We could help host workshops on the necessity of it, the benefits of it to the community, work with city staff, as well as the street sweeping, to come up with a program and a street sweeping signage program that everyone's happy.
And mainly, like I said, the signage, too, because we have to make it, I would like to say it more mandatory, that the residents, when we have the street sweeping days on their neighborhoods, streets shouldn't be, their cars should not be on the street. But we have to do it in a way so to get them to understand that it has to be done. So, anything you guys can do on something like that, I would look forward to seeing. Okay. Who has number two question want to ask?
Hi. Thank you again for the presentation. That's very detailed. What is your approach in managing delivery of capital improvement projects, street and sewer projects?
Just a quick note on the street sweeping before I answer this question. I have a lot of experience in the signage, you know, depending on there's a citation program, or one side of the street one day or the other, so, but like Melissa said, we're gonna have a comprehensive response. Regarding the CIP projects, in terms of the delivery, it is extremely important, and this team is very, very experienced with the CIP delivery. I want to use an analogy of walking into a closet that, you know, various items are all over the place, you know, pants, coats, socks, you name it. First, we have to assess, you know, what projects, where everything is, you know. Once we determine, you know, the status of each project and what's lagging behind, whether it is a project that is partially funded, or unfunded, or fully funded, but it hasn't been acted upon for several months, we organize that closet. You know, once we organize that closet, we come up with a system, coupled with the software and project scheduling program, that it becomes a no-brainer. From that point on, it really doesn't matter what type of CIP project, whether it is street rehab or sewer project, they're all requiring project management. And bottom line is that you gather the components that impact the schedule, cost, scope, and various items of that particular project, and then you keep pushing on a daily basis. There's also ways to do monitoring, as well as reporting, reporting in a detailed manner and the executive summary for the city manager and city council.
Thank you.
Quick question, okay? I have a more practical question, okay? I found out, okay, city engineer department is so important, because almost everything under the engineering, okay, consultant or the help, okay, to approve a lot of capital improvement or traffic signal, et cetera, et cetera, and how you help us, meaning, for example, okay, a resident, okay, a lot of residents calling for one street, for example, Cameron, Cameron Street, or Cameron Avenue, or La Pointe Avenue on the south side, that they have a lot of accident, and they're talking about, maybe we need to put a traffic signal. So, we might be go to the traffic engineer to study. So, from the study till you finding till implement, that will, okay, have a traffic signal over there, how long it take? So, the resident can have, okay, the safety over there on that street, okay, lower the speed at the same time, reduce the traffic accident. So, maybe you can answer about that question?
Yeah, I mean, if a request comes in traffic-related, the first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna assess it from a technical standpoint. So, we do follow CMUT CD and the CBC, and make sure that, what are the parameters of the request? What is the volumes of the traffic? So, we do an actual technical traffic study to see if it warrants a traffic signal. At that point, based on the guidelines, if it warrants a traffic signal, we would take it before the traffic committee.
How long it take for this study?
I mean, if it's an urgent item that you want us to expedite it, we have that ability to expedite it. So, typically, we'd have to order the counts. We could probably have a report within two to three weeks, probably, of a traffic analysis. Yeah, I mean, typically, we'd want to do it during schools, and it's such a case-by-case basis, but we would want to do it while school was in session, so we could really capture the maximum amount of activity going on, two to three weeks, scheduling the counts, preparing the report, and then by that, putting it on the agenda for the traffic committee, explaining it to them, going through the approval process, and then from there, working with city staff to be able to procure what is needed for the installation, the contractor and everything. I mean, we would work with the city staff to be able to expedite it as much as we could, given the availability, yeah.
It might be possible. Been doing this about, close to more than 35 years, actually. If there's a traffic signal involved, right now, the traffic signal polls are, for example, almost four months' delivery, meaning from the time you approve a project, saying, we're ready to start the project, it will be four months, just to get traffic signal polls. So, delay time. And one signal installation may be month to two months' construction, it could be months. But what's important is to get to that point quickly, and if there is now items beyond our control, such as getting traffic signal polls, we can't control that, what can we do in the meantime to mitigate in the interim and minimize the accident potential? It could be temporary stop signs of signal, for example, it could be some other signage, some other information that we can put at that location. So, the timing is, the initial study can be done quickly, but in case of construction, those are beyond our control, once we let it out, because there is certain time that manufacturer will take. So, that's how we approach these things, to expedite.
So, during the, okay, waiting for the traffic signal to be installed, okay, and you can put a maybe stop sign? And I heard about, I saw quite a few, okay, stop sign with LED flashing light?
Yep.
Okay, I think this is a new thing, so kind of help the children, or help the car to stop, so we can have children safely going through the intersection. So, this is something under your kind of recommendation, too, right?
Yes, we would assess the situation, and if the accident rate is high, and if it's gonna take six, seven months to install the traffic signal because of poll deliveries and all that, we would immediately look at, okay, we can, for example, purchase solar-powered flashing beacons, and doesn't even need to go through Edison, Edison for service, that alone is a few months. So, we can do these things quickly and inexpensively.
And how about the grant? So, since, okay, a lot of your, okay, engineering, that you can apply grant for the city, so we can implement to a lot of CPI or other, okay, and the construction, so maybe you can help us a lot with that, right?
Correct, yes, we would do that.
So, how you do it? So, it's from the city manager, or you guys will apply, see what, you can do the survey and tell the city, we have a 17-square mile, 120,000 population, with a lot of intersection, with a lot of school crosswalk, and how you, okay, maybe survey and to see what you should do, because I think we need a lot of thing, and hopefully get a lot of grant to implement a lot of, okay, things, so to help out a lot of safety reason for our resident?
Correct, we would do that, and as a matter of fact, we do know what grants exist, what grant programs exist. We would look at your locations and city, see what can fit into one of those or multiple grant programs, and communicate with city manager and city staff, and move forward with providing, submitting applications for those projects. Thank you.
I have the fourth question, and it is, in your experience, what is the key to developing good relationships with other city departments, the County of Los Angeles, Caltrans School Districts, and the Regional Water Control Board?
Okay. In short, we are all government agencies, and we need to work together, and each government agency has their own requirements that, quite honestly, they need at the local level to be respected and abided by. So, throughout the 30 years of experience that TransTech has had, particularly in LA County, dealing with Caltrans, Water Quality Board, LA County Public Works, and other agencies, we have developed a good rapport with those individuals that are in charge of the city services, and one of the important things is that know their requirement in advance. You know, what the larger agencies don't like to see happening in the smaller cities is that, either due to lack of resources, whether there are staff or consultants that are not familiar with the process, they don't know the requirements of the agency. And, you know, obviously, things get delayed, you know, projects can't get implemented on time, and then it's a bad situation, both for the local city, as well as the agency that needs to, in their mind, educate, you know, whether there's consultants or the city staff. So, in TransTech, we have good relations with those agencies. We have done different grants and working relationship, you know, whether it is Clean Water Act, or transportation-type projects, or whether there is a grant, you know, having to do with reimbursement to the city, that we know what to submit, you know, how to deal with those, you know, we know when to set up a meeting, you know, we know who the stakeholders are. And so, once we implement those knowledges, the end result would be favorable, both for the local agency's objectives and the larger agency.
We're interested in finding economies and efficiencies of scale. What makes your firm good at doing that for us and for the public?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, we're interested in finding economies and efficiencies of scale in all aspects, from, you know, like Tony mentioned, in studies, and plan check, and CIPs, all of the above, anything and everything. What makes your firm good at delivering that to us?
Let me take a shot, if I'm on the right track, to answer your question. As mentioned earlier by Melissa, TransTech is a multidisciplined firm. We do plan check in-house, we do grant writing, we do all kinds of stuff, you know, having to do with the city engineering, as well as building and safety and plan check, construction management and inspection. So, once we have the disciplines in-house, we're able to save costs, you know, for our client cities. You know, that's one avenue that we are able to save costs. The other avenue is that we avoid duplications. You know, if we do a, say, a traffic study for a particular grant, you know, the same traffic study could be used to justify certain other CIP projects, so that the city, the client city doesn't have to go through different studies that are client city doesn't have to go through different studies that are, you know, for 70, 80%, there are multiple, duplication of the same effort, you know, however, it may not be at the end of the day not necessary. Not only that, but also our fees are very competitive, you know, because we can save those efforts by having those disciplines in-house and pass on those cost savings to the client cities.
Yes, please.
One of the things we actually pride ourselves is, we provide the service to the extent needed. What I mean by that is, for example, you mentioned actual projects, construction management, inspection. Well, if the project needs an inspector for two hours, we have several inspectors in the area, we're just going to do two hours. We're not going to bring someone and spend eight hours and at the city and charge you eight hours, because we know we can keep that person busy at other projects too. Therefore, we provide that savings to you, and you don't get charged all those extra hours unnecessarily. So that's one way that we really keep the project cost down by having large staff within the area, and they're all exchangeable, very talented with equal experience, they'll be able to provide the same level of service at a very cost-effective manner.
Thank you. And as a follow-up to, what percentage do you usually save your clients? Do you have any data on that?
I don't have any specific data. It varies because the project size is important too, and also number of projects. If there are, for example, three, four projects taking place at the same time, and then we're able to have one project manager manage those four projects, the savings could be tremendous as opposed to managing a single project at a time. So it will vary based on number of projects. But we do save significant amount, and we don't have specific data, but we can bring that if you want comparison.
Yes, I would absolutely want that.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Quick question, okay, that's pretty important for, for the city due to, I think you know, West Covina has a ten freeway, and that West Covina have a potential BKK, the, okay, and the development. So, so all this development, and we have a West Covina Plaza, a potential big development coming in, and ten freeway, we have potentially quite a few kind of lineup, okay, they're interested to come to our city. So, so how you as an engineering company to help the city, to help the developer, and to get the thing done ASAP, and so we can bring the money to the city?
Okay, I, I can go ahead and start with my response. First part was about freeway, and that, it's kind of a connected question you had asked before about how we work with other agencies, Caltrans being an important agency in your city, because the freeway goes through your city, basically. We work with Caltrans very well, and you have, we all have to recognize, Caltrans is a, what we call jurisdictional agency. So they regulate their rules applied, not local rules within their jurisdiction. You may think the street that goes under or over the freeway is your street, which is the case, but their jurisdictional boundaries actually extends beyond just a freeway. So any, any projects you do within those areas have to go through Caltrans. That's why we're coming, we work with Caltrans, we understand their requirements, their expectations, and we make sure whatever studies are prepared, they comply with Caltrans. And we have built a, quite a positive working relationship based on our knowledge and trust with them, because we have done so many projects. They know we're not just one-sided, but we look at with the good of overall project for, for the jurisdiction, for the community. So therefore, our projects are generally well-received, and we communicate with Caltrans quite often. So that's part for Caltrans. For BKK landfill, it is, I've been in this area for over 30 years, I'm very aware of the area and the project, and it's, you know, impacts potential and complications, and, and, and there are a lot of thoughts, and we've actually looked at your website, we looked at all the proposals you've received, we reviewed the proposal that you have received for one company. So we're trying to understand all these different approaches and what is being proposed, what the city is expecting to see. And, and we're not in a position to give an advice, because we haven't really studied these things in detail, and not only studied, we did not study them, we need to check with the city management, understand these proposals, because we can only look at a few pages, but it doesn't give us all the information we need. In terms of moving the projects forward, once the city management and then ultimately city council moves forward with a project, then we would then assist the developer and the city with the process. That's where we come in quickly, how we can process the project once it is at the entitlement stage. But the entitlement is up to you, it's up to city, not, you know, it's not something that we can get an approve or disapprove. So that's how we would help, by being very proactive in moving the projects forward.
I'd like to, thank you for coming over tonight. The questions we ask, I'd like to see if you can come up with a little bit more defined answers for us, which are our questions, it's ready to be finding more for us, and we can understand a little bit better.
Public comment?
Oh, do we have any public comment that want to speak on this? If not, we see we're going to close it. Any public comment? And I think if we have no other questions right now, we just want to, city manager, you have anything you want to say first?
Um, thank you. No, the city attorney, I believe, has one item to add to your closed session, which came up just late this afternoon. I'm going to ask him to do that for us.
Oh, well, we can discuss that in closed session, but it, so we may be adding something to closed session agenda, which we're entitled to do, assuming you vote.
Well, I want to thank you very much. We're looking forward to speaking with you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, we're.
Will we keep this?
Yeah, this is ours.